Welcome to the AZ Political Podcast. I'm Jim Sharp. And our headlines this week. Headline number one, after several nights of protests across the valley, protesters decided to let their gripes see the light of day. Hundred shows up at the Arizona Capitol on Wednesday afternoon protesting, well, about everything that has to do with Donald Trump, immigration policies, LGBT rights, Elon Musk. It might be easier to ask what they weren't protesting. Personally, the only thing I ask is that the protests stay peaceful and add in some of the flavor that past protests have had. I mean, where did all the protesters with the drums go? They all joined bands or something? And for a little inspiration, all he has to do is look to former Senator Kirsten Sinema. Remember back when she was wearing a pink tutu, part of the Green Party, protesting the Iraq war? How about some of that color coming back into the protests? And headline number two, judges in two of the three federal lawsuits filed against President Trump's executive order attempting to end automatic citizenship, birthright citizenship for babies born in the US to non-citizens, handed down injunctions against that order as US District Judge John Kuhnauer indefinitely extended an injunction in a suit filed by Arizona and three other states. And the Reagan appointee said at the time, it has become apparent that to our president, the rule of law is but an impediment to his policy goals. Earlier, Federal Judge Deborah Boardman said the plaintiffs in her case that she's overseeing, five pregnant undocumented women would very likely succeed on the merits of their case. And headline number three, four days after getting caught doing 48 in a 30 mile per hour zone, Arizona State Senator Mark Fincham talked the Prescott Police Chief into dismissing a traffic ticket he got. In a letter to Chief Amy Bonney citing legislative immunity, Fincham, a former Kalamazoo, Michigan police officer who carpetbagged to Prescott after serving Tucson in the legislature, asked the ticket be voided and stricken from the record. By the way, I could come back to bite him in his tailpipe. That brings us to our guest this week on the AZ Political Podcast, which is Thomas Galvin, the Chairman of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. He represents the county's District Two, which is located in the northeastern part of the valley, parts of Scottsdale, Tempe, and Mesa. Did I get that right?
Right.
Okay. Supervisor Galvin has been a Republican since he became eligible to vote. And the same year, he worked on a successful mayoral campaign. He was also the head of a Young Republicans group in the valley. So by all means, you belong on the AZ Political Podcast. Welcome.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so let's start with this. You're a land use attorney.
I am.
And your biography on the website for Rose Law Group, where you're a partner, says, and I'm quoting here, "You advised a professional sports team on the successful public approval of an extended lease for a multipurpose sports arena." Because one of the things I want to talk about is funding for Chase Field, where the Diamondbacks play.
Yeah.
Which team and which arena deal?
That was the Phoenix Suns for the Footprint Center. So that was December of 2019, January 2020. The Phoenix City Council had rejected the Suns' original package or proposal to refurbish what is now the Footprint Center. They hired my law firm. We got involved. I'm very proud of that. I think we did a fantastic job. But that experience taught me that this is about working with political, public figures, sports leaders, business leaders, and getting the community involved. And very quickly, we were able to rally community support, get Phoenix City Council approval, because the city of Phoenix owns the arena. So it is a public asset, and the Phoenix Suns only play there 40 times a day. And as you know, Footprint Center is active almost every night. So if you look at the 300 nights a year, there's something going on in that arena. So that was a great experience.
By the way, speaking of the experience around that, do you remember when the guy showed up who actually had shot Mary Rose Wilcox
Yeah.
over the baseball stadium? And then he shows up in front of the city council and says this very thing, "I just got out of prison from having shot Mary Rose Wilcox over public funding, and I don't think you should fund this."
I was there.
Wow.
In the room that night.
Yeah.
The whole room gasped. But little did I know that within two years, I would be a county supervisor. So I cannot tell you how many times that I've been reminded that that guy told people in public he shot a county supervisor over a sports stadium.
Wow.
Yeah.
Crazy. I criticized him on the radio over that. And he called the station. And a Phoenix detective actually worked on a case for me for a while, just to make sure that this guy wasn't after me.
It was bizarre. Ms. Wilcox was just a few rows away from him.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
That's crazy. Insane. All right. So Arizona House Bill 2704 would repurpose existing sales tax revenue generated at Chase Field and income tax from baseball players' salaries to create a fund that would pay for ballpark repairs, upgrade, maintenance. Do you support this bill? And how much will it reduce the amount of taxes that are flowing into the county's general fund? I mean, are we robbing Peter to pay Paul with this deal?
So the county has not yet taken a position on this bill. We're watching what's happening at the legislature. We're going to let the legislature and the governor decide that from a policy standpoint of how tax money should be allocated, whether or not it gets recaptured at a stadium. There are concerns that we have, and there are some issues that we want to raise as subject matter experts, and also any effect it has in the county. But Jim, as you know, when you're talking about these type of bills, you're affecting state tax revenue, you're affecting county tax revenue.
Yeah.
You're affecting city tax revenue.
That's why I was asking, you know, how would it affect county taxes?
It's all levels of government. We haven't gotten an official number of what it would be. But I think because of the way state share sales tax is allocated, it's not going to be as much as, let's say, the cities that they get. They get quite a bit. Obviously, the state sales tax portion would be the biggest as well. So this is something for the legislators at this point to decide whether or not they want to move forward. We were just in committee this week, and we had county staff just give perspective on the county's role in all this.
One of the things that was amended on that bill was, would be that the Diamondbacks would have to pay a penalty if they were to leave Arizona. Any money in the fund would revert back to the state.
Yeah.
Have you had a chance to look at the language on this bill? And as an attorney, are you comfortable with, you know, the penalties that are in place so that we wouldn't lose that money?
Well, I know the motivation for the penalties is to encourage and incentivize the team to stay.
Right.
Right? Because you don't want to give-
You want the team to stay, right?
We all want the team to stay.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's the separate part for us as a county, is to negotiate the lease aspect of it, because the county owns the stadium.
Right.
But in terms of penalties, and this is quite common in many cities around the country, where you have an incentive to make sure that the team doesn't just go, okay, well, thank you very much for the tax recapture. Ooh, Salt Lake City, how you doing? Las Vegas, what's going on? You know?
Who wants to play baseball in Salt Lake?
So for me, it's a give and take, right?
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what these, these deals should be. And if you're going to take something, you got to give something as well.
Yeah.
And I think it's completely reasonable. The dollar amounts, the years, all that, that's up to the people that write the laws.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if, if it, if it does meet those levels that you'd like to see, you know, the timeframes, would you, how would that be handled? Would you, as individual supervisors, then support it? Or would you actually try and, during a meeting, try and come out together as a, as a board to try and support that?
We're monitoring, we're monitoring how this legislation is going to go. And as you know, legislation can go in any different direction. Someone could offer an amendment on Monday. The governor could veto it. The governor could have her own thoughts. For me, the primary focus for me is the lease extension.
Okay.
That's the thing that we're focused on as a county. We're keeping an eye, obviously, on the stuff that the D-backs are doing. But that's, that's their bill. They have a lot of stakeholders that have supported them on that. It's up to the state to decide how these tax dollars get allocated. But then for us, Jim, the lease expires in 2027.
Right.
So for me, time is of the essence. And as you saw in the news last year, the Diamondbacks were not in the mood to negotiate last year. And they took some parting shots at my previous colleagues. But now I have new colleagues, and all five of us are eager to get to the table with the D-backs and see what we can do for a long-term plan.
How did working on the Suns Arena put you in a position to better negotiate with the Diamondbacks?
It's a great question. It's made me even more mindful of all of the different competing interests. First of all, you have a team. Many times, the team wants to stay where they are. They want to stay in the market where they're at.
Right.
Teams don't want to leave cities. That, that takes a lot. Also, we live in the fourth-largest county in the country. We're a large metropolitan area. There's 4.5 million people here. What I like to say is that we have the greatest sports fans in the world. We also do great things like hosting a Super Bowl and the Final Four, all those things. The Phoenix Open, which is going on this weekend, right? So teams want to be here. But you also have to be very careful in how you take care and be a good steward of tax dollars.
Right.
And you're not just gonna, for me, you're not just going to give money away willy-nilly, especially to billionaires. And voters are very smart. They pay attention to this stuff. You know, and you can't just be reflexively yes on everything or reflexively no on everything. And what we did in the Suns was craft a deal that I thought, what I called it, a triple bottom line win. Win, win, win. A win for the Suns, a win for the city, but a win for the fans as well. And I think that's feasible here with the D-backs. But it's a little bit more complicated, because they're going for that, for those, that tax recapture at the state capitol. But it's going to be my philosophy as Chairman of the Board this year, to shepherd that in a way that we're going to negotiate with the Diamondbacks in good faith, but the Diamondbacks have to realize that we represent the interests of taxpayers.
You know, it's interesting, if you don't mind, I'd like to stay on sports for just a little while longer, because this fascinates me. Because I had a couple of friends who would consider themselves fiscal conservatives. And they were all for the Cardinals stadium. They weren't even Cardinals fans. They're just like, we need the NFL to stay here. And then, interestingly, after the Cardinals stadium got done, it seemed like voters' appetite for much money being spent on sports teams kind of dried up. Am I wrong?
You're, you're not wrong. I think it's because of the 2008, 2009 Great Recession.
Yeah.
I think that changed a lot of things for people. People saw big banks, big institutions that really had led people along, really get bailed out.
Yeah.
Or no, you didn't see any of these bankers go to jail. And what happened was a lot of people lost their houses. And all of a sudden, what you saw was a downtick in, in sports attendance, in every sport, actual attendance at the arenas. And people are now cutting the cord on cable, where before you had to pay for ESPN, whether or not you watched it or not. But people are like, hey, my kid wants to watch Disney Plus. So there's a little bit of disconnect with, with the sports leagues in light of economic conditions. But also, I think there's a fatigue factor as well. How many more stadiums can you be asked to help subsidize or fund? And frankly, the Cardinals stadium was a brand-new stadium at a time that we were not talking about stadiums that much.
Right.
And now Cardinal Stadium is almost 20 years old, which is hard to imagine.
I know.
But you know, if I can switch gears here a little bit, in my chairman's speech, I talked about trying to bring a hockey team back to the valley.
Right.
I've been talking to the NHL. And I'm using that experience that I did with the Phoenix Suns to do it, I think, the right way to help bring back a hockey team to the valley. But that, to me, is two goals there. Find an owner, has to be a billionaire, so there's not that many, and find a great location for a world-class arena.
Being a partner at a law firm, you're not quite at billionaire status yet?
No, not yet.
Okay.
That's why I'm sitting here, actually.
Right? If you had that kind of money, you wouldn't be sitting here talking to me, right?
No.
No. So let's, let's, let's switch to, to voting. And, and people, you know, wanting results faster and, but also wanting the convenience of being able to vote early. And, and I have to admit, I've been guilty of this in the past, you know, dropping off my mail-in ballot day of.
You're one of those?
I didn't do it this year, and I didn't do it the last time, but I have done it in the past. So there's a couple of legislative bills. You've got Senate Bill 1011, House Bill 2703. Both of them will try to move up Arizona's early voting deadline. Now, this is with the belief that the public wants faster results.
They do.
But does that really increase voter trust in the system? Because, I don't know, I don't know. In some ways, in my way of thinking, it's like, you guys take your time, make sure you get everything counted right. If it takes you a little while, that's okay.
Are you not checking the results two days after, though?
Oh, I was checking the results 10 minutes after the polls closed. But that's my job, right? You know what I mean? So that's not true, though, during the Trump era. I mean, everybody's like, I mean, we've all been Americans. It's like, we want it, and we want it now. Like, that's kind of an American thing. But it seems like we were okay with it taking a while. It didn't take any longer this last time around than it has in years past. But it's just people were, you know, there must be something going on down there that's funky. Why we didn't know 10 minutes after the polls closed?
Well, the times have changed.
Yeah.
Arizona is now a swing state.
Right.
And before, when we had John McCain and Jan Brewer running for office, and other folks running for office, John Kyle, you pretty much knew even before Election Day what the results were going to be. And if it was any sort of wonderment, it was going to be like whether or not John McCain's going to wound by double digits or not, right?
Right.
We're now one of seven swing states. And we're only two swing states in the West. It's us and Nevada. And the fear that I had was going into the November general election is, what if this election comes down to Arizona or Nevada? But for me, selfishly, Arizona, right? Can you imagine? It takes 10, 12, 14 days for each of the 15 counties to finish tabulating the votes. And it was like, good lord, what if we're that state and the entire presidential election hinges on that? After what we went through in 2020, I was not a county supervisor in 2020, but obviously, I was watching all of that. I saw that whole ridiculous so-called audit happen in 2021, which is what motivated me to apply to be a supervisor when the vacancy opened up at the end of 2021. First thing I said was, I'm a conservative Republican, but these elections are fair. And it's been my frustration and my disappointment with people on the right who keep saying that the elections are rigged, or the elections are botched.
Right.
But now my frustrations are with people on the left, who say, everything is perfect. Everything is fine.
Right.
Don't change anything.
There is a middle ground there.
There is a middle ground. And for me, it's always about process and improvement. And what can we do to improve the process? And right now, I'm very worried about the future of our election system. And this is me sounding the alarm. And this is why I think these bills are a good idea. The strain is considerable for these workers, these employees, and these volunteers that we have. And the pressure is tremendous. Within 48 hours, I've noticed, people usually start freaking out that Arizona hasn't published its results. Because what happens is, within 48 hours, about 45 other states have done it. Forty-five other states have done it. We're not even close.
Yeah.
We're going to be about 65, 70% done within 48 hours of election night, so by Thursday. But our elections are close. And, you know, even Ruben Gallego, who won by a pretty decent margin, not in a blowout.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it was until Saturday that his race was called, okay?
Yeah.
And that guy was winning every single poll throughout the cycle, every poll.
Yeah.
But yet, we couldn't call it till Saturday. So the way we can do it is, we can shift it by having a system, what I call 95 to 1. 95% of ballots, ballots tabulated by election night. You shift the deadline of when people can drop off early ballots, because that's the whole point, right? The name, early ballot.
Right.
Friday before Election Day. But to make up for that, I've advocated for two things. More polling sites. We're going to use government buildings. And allow in-person voting on Saturday and Monday before Election Day.
Okay.
And that will alleviate any pressures on the system. We'll have more results tabulated on Tuesday, and all these things will be a thing of the past.
That's what I did, by the way. I voted on Monday before the election, early voting. And, and what was kind of odd is that I kind of almost had to go through the same process-
You had to put it in an envelope.
You had to put it in an envelope. Yeah. And sign it. And I was like, but I already put, showed you my driver's license and filled all the stuff on the computer, like I was going to be voting in person?
So I knew, I'm a day-of voter. I've always has been. I come from New York. I like voting in person. That's, that's a thing for me. So when I moved out here, I'm one of the few who doesn't actually vote by mail. But since I've become a supervisor where we oversee elections, we're pretty busy on Election Day.
Yeah.
So I was like, okay, I'm going to vote before Election Day in person. So I go in, show my ID. My information shows up in the poll book, verifies that it's me and my address. They give me the ballot on demand, the ballot that's made on on-demand printer.
Right.
I fill it out. You don't tabulate it. You have to put it in the envelope-
In the envelope, yeah.
And sign the envelope, which then has to go downtown.
Yeah.
And then go for signature verification.
Right.
And I'm like, this is really dumb.
Not efficient.
Okay? It's really dumb. It's not efficient. And the bill addresses stuff like that. And so I get really annoyed, frankly, when Governor Hobbs says that this is going to impede access to voting, and we don't need this. And I said, you're wrong. We do need it, and we have to do it.
Well, you know, according to some people, having ID is an impediment to being able to vote. So, yeah. Okay, I'll kind of hold my opinion on that one. So there's that. And then what else, what can the board do to speed up the count?
Yeah.
Besides what, you know, the state, the state legislature, and then possibly Governor Hobbs saying, okay, yeah, you got to turn in your stuff by Friday.
Yeah. So the board should always be looking at what it can do better. We can't just complain about state law. We have to follow state law. All 15 counties have to do it. I became chairman a month ago. When you become chairman, you have a speech, and you outline your agenda and your priorities for the year. And one of the things I said was that, for us, we need to do a comprehensive review of how we handle and oversee elections. And some people in the media are sort of like, oh, they're going to do an audit. And I don't like to use the A-word. I never use the A-word because of what happened in 2021 at the Veterans Coliseum.
Yeah.
But a comprehensive review is really important, just to look at our process. Like, I literally want like an expert to sit there, have a stopwatch, and time it, how long it takes for the ballots to come out of the envelope, to be smoothed out, to be reviewed by the bipartisan team, then to be processed, then to be tabulated, and just figure out, what are the kinks in the system that we should be looking at? And to me, there's no secret cows. We're happy for someone to come in, take a peek under the hood, and be like, you know what, you guys, you can do X, Y, and Z better. And I hope by the end of the year, we can get that done.
Well, I'll offer up my kids' elementary school. They can all, like, call an election, then you can tabulate their stuff.
Okay.
You know?
We'll do that.
Kids love voting.
They do.
They love voting. And they always want to vote for who their parents vote for.
I know. Yeah.
Yeah. So I wanted to ask you about a couple other things, though, too, of course. One more thing on this.
Yeah.
It's funny, I was talking to a guy who I've known for a while, moves in political circles. And I told him I was going to talk to you today. And he says, oh, poor Thomas, you know, the MAGA's are hating on him right now. I'm like, what? Why would that be? And he said, well, because he doesn't want to turn the county board's control over the elections back over to the recorder's office, now that there's, maybe he's not MAGA, but Mr. Heap is now in charge of the recorder's office. And he's definitely in Donald Trump's corner. And so now you need to put all that power back in his hands that was taken away when there was a Democrat in that office. And it's, and I'm like, it's kind of short-sighted. If, if, you know, if you don't like them having the power when there's a Democrat there, but you want to put the power back in their hands when there's a Republican there, there's, very well could be a Democrat back in that office again, right?
Yeah. Well, your friend makes some great points.
Yeah.
I don't think there should be a partisan lens in how you handle elections. What you should do is look through the lens of what's the best operationally, and what's the best for efficiency, and what's the best for cost-effectiveness. And I think we ran big, beautiful elections last year, okay, to quote someone we know. We ran the presidential preference primary.
Yeah.
We ran the July primary, and we ran a November presidential election, which is by far the most scrutinized of any election in Arizona history. The eyes of the world were on us last October, November, and we pulled it off. And you don't go around afterwards saying, hey, throw roses our way and bouquets, because you did the job you're supposed to do.
Right.
But it also revealed and showed that we did the job the right way. So state law divides election responsibilities. I think a lot of people don't understand that. I'm sure your very sophisticated audience understands that. But responsibilities are split between the recorder, who's in charge of voter registration.
Right.
And early voting, where he or she literally sends out those ballot envelopes that you hold on to for several weeks. The Board of Supervisors are in control of in-person voting, the whole operation, the day of. We have to coordinate with hundreds of places to host these sites. And we're also in charge of tabulation. And ultimately, who votes to certify the election? It's the Board of Supervisors.
Right.
It's on us. The buck stops with us. And we also set the budget, not just for the recorder, but every department and agency in the county, including the sheriff, including the county attorney. So yeah, there is some people on the right who are not being in, doing this in good faith.
Right.
They're being disingenuous. But I have learned over the last three years, it's part of the job. It's part of the territory. One thing I don't do is I don't get down in the mud with these people. I just plow ahead. I do my job. And I think one thing I've shown over the last three years is I have a backbone. I'm not afraid of pressure. I'm not afraid of people. I just go ahead and do the right thing. I'm going to continue doing that.
All right. And I'll tell you who said that, by the way, later, when we're off camera. What's the county's budget looking like? I know a lot of cities are struggling right now. What, what's the county budget as we head into this new year?
Well, it's funny, if we get attacked by the MAGA crowd for being rhinos, we are the most conservative, fiscally responsible, large government in America. We don't have debt. Two years ago, this legislature and Katie Hobbs ran up a $1.7 billion deficit. At Maricopa County, we have plenty of cash reserves. And we've actually cut the budget since I've been there. And your colleague Mike Broomhead said, when I saw that you guys cut your budget by 11%, I thought it was a typo. 1.1. I go, no, it was 11%. So we're just shy under $4 billion. What a lot of these cities that I think are getting in trouble, yeah, there's been some cuts at the state level. But they got hooked on this ARPA money that was flowing in from DC. And at Maricopa County, we were very careful about that. We knew that that one day, there was going to be a fiscal cliff. So one thing we don't do is fund projects that are ongoing and recurring through these federal ARPA dollars. The ARPA program was through Joe Biden. The CARES Act was through President Trump in his first term. We don't do that. We are bracing ourselves for either flat revenue this year, or maybe even a small cut in revenue. But my philosophy is very simple. Don't spend more than you take in. So we always have a balanced budget. We don't have any debt. We've cut property tax rates four years in a row. This fiscal story of Maricopa County is actually amazing. And out of the top 12 largest, biggest counties in America, we're the only one run by Republicans. And we are a model of financial responsibility, because if you look at LA County, Cook County, Harris County, Dallas, whatever, they're financial basket cases. And there's a reason why companies are coming here. There's a reason why big companies are coming here, like TSMC from Taiwan. There's a reason why I think ASU got one of those big three R&amp;D AI things. It's because Maricopa County is doing a great job, and I'm really proud of our fiscal record.
Haven't you found that sometimes MAGA and fiscal conservatism don't exactly intersect?
That's right. That's right. Yeah. Sometimes. Many times, they do.
Oh, no, absolutely. Absolutely. So let's, let's take a second to talk about schools. Any worry that there are more Isaac School districts out there? And how do you feel about how all that got resolved or is getting resolved?
Well, first of all, I think there are more Isaac School boards out there. And secondly, the county is not involved in schools.
Right.
That's state function.
Right.
You always hear that discussion happening at the state level between the legislature, the state superintendent of public instruction, which currently is Tom Horn, and the governor. And for some reason, when this school came out that they were $28 million in debt, people started looking to us.
Right.
And I think frankly, because we do a good job with money, and we actually have money left over. When you're the legislature and the governor, and you're running up deficits, you go, oh, where can we find money? Oh, Maricopa County, right? And so that's what happens, is that people like to pick on us. And I push back. And I said, no, this is your job. This is your responsibility. We were called on to bail out a school district that has been fiscally mismanaged. And that's the best-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is that there's some criminal activity going on there.
Right. Yeah.
But can you imagine if Maricopa County stepped up and said, you know what, we're just going to start throwing money to schools? I think some people in my political party, on the right-hand side of the spectrum, would flip out and be like, oh, no, you don't. That's not your function. So I was really, really disappointed when Governor Hobbs singled us out and said we should bail out the schools. First of all, it's illegal. But secondly, I also have concerns about this quote-unquote solution, where another school district, the Tolleson, I think it was Elementary School District.
Tolleson High School.
Tolleson High School's school district just happens to have $70 million sitting around, and can just take $28 million and give it to the Isaac School Board? Well, the way I look at it is, if I'm a parent in Tolleson, my kid's only going to be there for a few years. It's not like my kid's going to be there for the next 20 years. But for that $28 million going over to Isaac, my kid's not going to be able to access that. That's a concern. And I'm not sure if school districts should be in the business of being a lender. I just think that's really weird. But I think it's a stopgap measure, and hopefully, the folks at the state level can figure this out.
So if you don't mind, real quickly, and I know this is not your area exactly, but we do have a county superintendent of schools-
We do.
-who I think really only oversees one school, but they do have a job.
Right.
Can you explain what that job is?
Yeah. And the way the county was involved is that we have a county treasurer, who basically acts as a bank.
Right.
And dulls out the cash, if the cash is there. And he sounded the alarm, John Allen. He's like, there's no more money in the account. And he can't rob Peter to pay Paul.
Right.
He sounded the alarm. But the county superintendent of schools also works with the state superintendent, and they monitor these districts. And the county superintendent of schools last May raised a red flag and said, hey, guys, Isaac School Board, there's some financial issues here. You should take a look at it. And I went back and reviewed the timeline. May, July, September, October, November, and December, folks at the county were alerting state folks, and they didn't do anything.
Wow.
And not until the year-
And that's, this is the old county superintendent.
That's the old county superintendent. His, yeah, and he's gone. But now we have a new one, Shelley Boggs. But not until after the new year, which is this year, 2025, did the state act, and they acted way too late. You cannot appoint a receiver to overtake a school district one week out from the school district imploding. It should have been done last summer.
Wow. I just, I can't even imagine how scary that was for parents, you know?
It was.
My wife's a public school teacher, too. And it's like, you know, not knowing if she'd get paid, and not knowing if our kids would be able to go to school. It's like-
And kudos to those teachers who still showed up-
Yeah.
-every single day.
Yeah.
With the weight on their shoulders, I'm sure, but they did it for those kids.
Yeah. Any other parts of, uh, your agenda or anything that you, you'd like people to know about you as you take over the, the chairship of the Board of Supervisors for Maricopa County?
Yeah. We have a lot going on at Maricopa County. And it's funny, whenever I introduce myself to people around town and I say, I'm a county supervisor, people go, what is that? Uh, I like to say, we're the middle child of local government. No one really pays any attention to us. And, uh, uh, people know their mayor and their city council. They know their governor. They're familiar with the state legislature, the attorney general. But you ask them who their county supervisor is?
Mm-hmm.
No clue.
Yeah.
But we're so important. We actually have the second largest budget in the state, after the state budget. And we handle you from birth to death. Birth certificate, death certificate and everything in between. But nearly half of our budget, Jim, is public safety. This is the sheriff's office, the county attorney's office, the prosecutors, the jails, the court system. That's a very important part for us. And for me, it's twofold. Um, when Joe Arpaio was sheriff, there was a lawsuit and unfortunately for the last 15 years, and now for four sheriffs, our sheriff's department is under federal oversight.
Crazy.
And it has just been decimated. It's been hollowed out. And we have spent $300 million over the last 15 years in compliance on stuff that's not even needing to be addressed anymore. All of those issues are, have gone by the wayside. But now the sheriff's office has the lowest pay of any law enforcement agency in the valley.
Yeah.
So the guys and women that are working at this department, they're there because they want to be there. But I want to keep them. We're losing people through attrition. We're having people, uh, it's trouble to recruit them. And I have talked to our new sheriff, Jerry Sheridan, and I said, let's work together on improving a compensation plan for the sheriff's office to recruit, retain, and attract these people. But also I think we need to figure out a way to get that federal monitor out. And, uh, people always keep telling me, you can't do it. You can't do it. Well, I'm going to try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to try.
It's worth trying.
It's, it's insane.
Yeah.
300 million? Like, we're approaching $300 million?
$300 million in over 15 years. Uh, every traffic stop still today requires paperwork